We got everybody here. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 27, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, Councilmember Shepherd announced that he, at yesterday's regular meeting, that he will arrive after roll call, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers, Cosson?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven Preston and one excused.
Thank you. Item 4A is citizens' input. Citizens' input's a maximum of 60 minutes. Except for input of citizens or matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record, and we'll be utilizing the podium to my left in front of the double doors. No participation. Citizens' input is now closed. We'll move on to item 4B, which is discussions. 4B1 is general election voting update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, members of City Council. First of all, thank you for agreeing to host this meeting today. This allows us to clear the backlog of topics and issues that we needed to discuss with you that kind of got sidetracked. As you know, we've been busy with other matters for the last couple of weeks. So hopefully with this particular workshop, we're back on track. Your November workshop, which I think is November 30th, that has a bunch of topics on that. But anyway, this meeting allows us the opportunity to get some much-needed direction on a couple of high-profile projects. And I'd like to introduce our first guest to provide you an update on the upcoming general election, but I'm going to turn it over to the City Clerk, Ms. Kimberly Brunson, to introduce the item and introduce today's guest speaker. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Kimberly Brunson, City Clerk. I would like to introduce to you Lee County Supervisor of Elections Tommy Doyle to address the general election voting update. Mr. Doyle?
Thanks for having me, and I hope everybody's surviving well and getting back to normal, which probably will take many years. But soon after the storm came through, I think it was October 2nd, I sent up my petition to the governor to allow us to have vote centers instead of election day precincts. Our assessment is that with the displacement of population, the damage to polling locations, that having the logistics of getting equipment on election day, poll workers on election day, that we needed to do this in order to serve the county and let, make sure everybody had a place to go vote. And with the displacement of the population from the Bariot, it's not only the barrier islands. You go up McGregor, oh, Cape Coral is really bad. All the way to McGregor Corridor, people are displaced. You drive down that road, it's furniture stacked all out, even in, close to downtown Fort Myers. So, we took the blueprint from Bay County, who was hit by Hurricane Michael in 2018, and sent a petition to waive several laws, and we got that petition about 10 days later. And so now we're in early voting, which will, if you see that, I passed out a mailer that hit the mailboxes to every registered voter started yesterday, informing them, we were concerned that some, a lot of voters didn't know what was going on. They were going to show up the precincts, so we sent this mailer to every voter. Plus, we're heavily advertising on every social media, radio, and even television to make sure we get the word out. We started early voting on Monday. It's, to me, it's a little slow, but I think it's, actually, this mailer comes out, it's going to be picked up. One other thing is that that mailer will tell you the deadline to request your vote by mail is on the 29th, which we are heavily pushing to try to keep the lines down at the voting sites. Right now, we haven't had any lines. We've had steady, but no lines. I'd like to see some lines coming out the door, so we make sure. I want to get a lot of people voting before election day. We can't have 100,000 people show up at 12 sites. I can take any questions about what we're doing, if you have any?
Councilmember Cosson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. Do you, do you plan to have signs or staff or something at the precincts to let people know in case they still show up?
Yeah, we'll start putting those out probably sometime this week. Every polling location will have signs. We've got signs being posted. We've got yard signs we're going to put out at every polling location.
Councilmember Welsh.
I have the same question. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming, Mr. Doyle. So, I've had probably a handful of residents reach out about not getting a sample ballot. And I know the reason to that was because of the storm, right? And, you know, mailboxes were down, and it probably wasn't a good thing to do operationally?
Yes, but let me just clarify something. We were going to send, we had it in line. It was scheduled to go. Our vendor's in Cape Coral, and so their power has been out for, I don't, they may have power now, I don't know. But we got another vendor. We're going to be sending sample ballots out this week.
Oh, thank goodness.
I think they go out November 1st.
I'll make sure.
So, and then we're doing something a little different. The sample ballot you get will be your ballot. It won't be an all-inclusive ballot. It's going to be your specific ballot.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I appreciate the update, Mr. Doyle, and I know you, you know, had a task at hand, just like we all did, and thanks for coming up to a solution to a problem.
Well, thanks for having me, and good luck, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 4B2, which is the annual review employee health and wellness center. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have Ms. Lisa Sinogo, your Human Resources Director, introduce the topic.
Hello, Lisa Sinogo, Human Resources Director. We have someone from Garing Group here, Dustin Kuhn, and he is going to discuss the return on investment with our medical health wellness center across the street. And so he's going to go over two years' worth of data and information to let you know how that's going.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Keen, Senior Benefit Consultant with the Garing Group. As Lisa mentioned, I will be going over your return on investment analysis for the city's Employee Health Center that was implemented in 2020. So, just a quick overview to frame the conversation. In March 2020, the city opened up their Health and Wellness Center to all employees, retirees, dependents, and spouses that are employed or enrolled under your health plan with Florida Blue. The overall goal of this center is to shift costs away from your health plan, where costs go up 8% to 12% a year, to a more controlled environment, where costs typically only go up about 3% on average, depending on utilization. With that, the fire department also joined the plan, January 1, 2021, as they also enrolled in the city's plan. And just from a services standpoint, anything related to, you know, PCP, urgent care type of office, is acute chronic conditions, preventative care, generic prescription dispensing, as well as occupational health, physicals, and workers' comp initial injury reports are included in this facility. So the first metric we want to look at is your health center utilization. How many appointments are going through the facility since April of 2020? You'll see that medical appointments have increased 14% since inception, and ancillary appointments, those are your labs, your x-rays, your prescription refills, have increased 23%. Occupational appointments have gone up 200%, mostly due to the fire integration coming into the clinic. And overall, total appointments have gone up 33% in the past 12 months versus the prior. So, very, very good utilization through the clinic thus far. The next metric we want to look at is capacity, and what this is, is a utilization of the total available appointments. You'll see in the red bar there, we target about 85% capacity, and the reason is, is because we find that to be an optimal point that allows for walk-ins, lower wait times, as well as staff to do administrative type of work. So you'll see in the first 12 months, in the upper right-hand corner, average capacity utilization was at 75%, which is pretty typical for a first-year clinic. The past 12 months, that utilization has gone up to 94%. So, the good news is, you're getting a lot of use out of your clinic. The bad news about that is that there's wait times that have been increasing, and staff, right, return over, threat comes higher and higher. So, ways to improve that is to either increase your staffing in the clinic and/or the hours of operations to allow for more available appointments. Recently, there has been approval to add four new staff members to the facility, as well as increase the hours of operation. So, we're hopeful that we'll see that capacity utilization dive down a little bit into the 80s, and then we expect eventually go back up. As, you know, wait times get lower, you'll get more usage, and then we can reassess the situation after that. As far as unique employees go, and unique employees is defined as, let's say, one person went to the clinic three times, we're tracking that as one visit. So, this looks at how many employees, right, or members are going to the clinic individually. We've seen a 32% increase in the past 12 months, also a very great metric, which is about a 6% average unique employee growth since inception. So, you're capturing more employees into the facility. When we look at dependents, dependent average growth has been about 33%, which equates to about 9% a month since inception. Also, very good. This is a very important demographic to capture, because on the health side with Florida Blue, spousal claims are about 40% higher than employee claims. So, getting the spouses in, dependents in, really helps with that ROI metric. Medications, also great utilization. We've seen 116% increase in medications dispensed. One thing to note here is that in April of 2021, the clinic offered mail order, which we've seen mail order also equates to higher compliance with medications, which will drive down your health spend. So, we've seen mail order go up 25%, overall medications up 116%. So, that was kind of a look at the clinic utilization. These next few slides will look at the utilization through your health plan through Florida Blue, and then we'll tie it all together on your ROI. So, with Florida Blue, looking at the office visits, there's been about a 4.3% decline in office visits since 2018, with obviously the clinic in there about 2020. So, this is a great, also, you know, again, the point is to shift costs away from this. So, seeing a decline is exactly what we'd like to see. Now, in the past 12 months, we did see a 7% increase in visits. However, COVID is throwing off a lot of this data. We know that, you know, people are going to the urgent care, getting their testing done through primary care. So, there is, you know, some of that that we have to take into consideration. As far as x-rays go, we saw a 6% decrease since inception, and negative 7% decrease if we remove any COVID-type of claims. Lab work, about a 3% average increase in labs, but if we remove COVID-type of claims, it's about a flat utilization. So, also, very good. Emergency room visits, so this is one of the most costly parts of your health plan. Average ER visit is around $2,000. So, any avoidance here will obviously save in claims dollars. Now, of course, if it's emergent, then emergency room is always the first place to go. Since inception, we've seen a 9.4% increase in ER usage, about a 3% increase if we remove COVID. So, we are seeing an increase in ER through your plan. Some of that might be due to your capacity is so high, 95%, that people, right, might be turned away from the clinic because of wait times and going to the ER. So, we're hopeful with the increase in staffing, hours of operation, right, that helps improve that number. Similar story with the urgent care. Last year, about a 32% decrease in urgent care visits. Over the past two years, we've seen about a 46% increase in visits. If we take away COVID, it's only about a 3%. Again, COVID really ramped up that urgent care usage through the plan. Lastly, generic prescription utilization. So, we've seen about an average decrease of 8.6% through your plan. Now that employees can get it through the clinic, right, those two are directly correlated. In all prescriptions, brand names, generics, specialties, we're seeing about an average decrease of about 1.5%. So, again, great metrics. So, to tie this all together, we look at the ROI in kind of two different lights. One method is cost avoidance. What was avoided through the health plan, and what did it cost through the clinic? And the second way is, you know, industry trend versus your actual trend. So, I'll give you kind of the two snapshots. In the first year of your clinic, and we presented this last year, you'll see in that first red box there on the left-hand side, total cost avoidance through the health plan was about $1.9 million. The cost of the clinic was roughly $1.49 million, which equates to a savings of about $418,000, or a 1.28 to 1 ROI. If we also include the savings to your employees, because the cost of care is at no charge, that savings goes up to about $597,000, or a 1.4 to 1. So, first year, great ROI. Typically, we see a 1 to 1. So, to see a 1.28 positive ROI, that was great. Second year, so the past 12 months, we've seen that ROI increase to about 1.49 to 1, or about a $992,000 savings. And if you include the member savings, that ROI goes up to about 1.63 to 1. If we kind of look at a different method here and just explaining that graph, if we look at industry trend, which claims go up about 8% a year, you'll see that's in the blue line. Your actual trend through your health plan is about 4.7% increase. So, you're trending at a much lower rate, almost half of what the industry is trending in terms of healthcare claims. So, if we kind of take an average of that over the past few years, that equates to about $1 million in savings under, you know, the actual versus industry trend. So, to summarize this, we're seeing a leveling off of clinic utilization as capacity is maxed out. But again, we're hoping for that to increase as we increase staff. Average wait time is about 14 days for certain services. So, again, we're hoping that comes down to under 7, under 5. And we also believe that higher capacity is driving some ER and urgent care usage through your health plan. So, overall, looking at the cost avoidance method, the city has saved $1.4 million, and under the trended claims method, about $1 million. So, it's safe to assume somewhere in there, 1 to 1.4 million, the city has realized in savings. So, happy to report that. Kudos to your staff. Kudos to all of you as well for supporting this, and I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for the update and the presentation. Any questions from Council on this topic? Thank you very much. It looks like we're trending in the right direction. So, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 4B3, is payment in lieu of parking program. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think Mike Struvi is going to be coming up to the podium. So, as we continue to look at ways to facilitate business development in areas of the city, and particularly in the South Cape CRA, we acknowledge that parking can be a limiting factor to redevelopment in the South Cape redevelopment area. And so, we've been having discussions among various staff members for quite a while on various incentives and approaches that we can implement to address parking-related issues in the downtown CRA. And for several years, you've had on the books reference to a payment in lieu of parking program, which essentially allows developers to pay into a fund in order to meet their parking requirements, rather than providing the parking on-site. So, it was referenced in the, on our books, but it wasn't exactly implemented. There were some, some issues associated with the existing language, and as we were examining that language, we thought that the time was right to revisit that entire program and actually put that program back into, into effect. And so, Mr. Struvi will lead you through to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Struvi.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Mike Struvi with the City Planning Division. I think the City Manager did a good job of sort of setting up some of the major highlights, really, of my presentation. This was the pilot program, Payment in Lieu of Parking, was a program that existed previously in the land use and development regulations. It was, in actuality, eliminated when we transitioned to the land development code. And so, the ordinance that you have before you as part of your backup material would allow for the reinstatement of this program for a portion of the South Cape District, and we'll look a little bit later at what portion of the South Cape District that we are recommending that this program be implemented for. What I'm going to do this morning is discuss very briefly with you some of the parking requirements in the South Cape District, because we do have unique parking requirements for this particular zoning district. We'll then look at existing and some proposed future parking facilities or infrastructure in the South Cape District. We'll talk a little bit about parking relief that is available to developers, not only in the South Cape District, but citywide. And then we'll finish up talking about some of the draft regulations that you'll be considering as part of the pilot program. So, in the South Cape District, and this is also true of the adjacent mixed-use Bimni District, we have reduced parking requirements for most, for most sites in both zoning districts. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is because we have a preponderance of very small sites in both zoning districts, and we have a lot of sites that are already developed. And so, when you're talking about redeveloping sites, or changing uses in existing buildings, in particular, if you're going from a less intensive to more intensive use, there can be problems that can be encountered fairly frequently with parking limitations in those, in that type of environment. One thing that is unique about the South Cape District is that we have city parking lots or city parking areas. And developers in the South Cape District, if they are located 25 feet or less from one of these city parking lots, are entitled to use those parking lots to meet part, but generally not all of their parking requirements for their own particular site. Another thing that is a little unique in the South Cape District is that we have striped parking in the city right-of-way along several streets. And so, likewise, in those situations, if you own a property and you are located within 500 feet of any of those on-street striped parking spaces, you are entitled to count those parking spaces towards meeting at least a portion of your on-site parking requirement. And then lastly, and again, this is unique to the South Cape District, under certain situations, we allow business owners to utilize unimproved lots to help meet their parking requirements for their businesses when those lots are immediately adjacent to their business establishments. Now, this is a pretty busy slide, so we're just going to land here for a second, and I'm going to walk you through this. And this shows the location of existing and future parking facilities or infrastructure in the South Cape District. I referred to earlier several parking lot or parking area sites. Those are shown on this slide, and they are shown in orange and in blue, those blue rectangles that you see on this slide. The two orange areas represent platted parking areas, and these are available not only for developers, for example, to utilize to help meet part of their minimum parking standards, but they're also available for the public to use as well. And those two platted city parking areas are Club Square, which is located to the north of Cape Coral Parkway, and then the orange area located to the south is the parking area associated with the former Veterans Museum. You see three, or actually four, blue rectangles, which are, again, are also parking lots or city parking areas. Those are deeded parking sites, and those would include, like, the Big Johns Plaza, Aguanamia, and so on. And if you look at the parking areas collectively for those six or seven parking area sites, that translates to a little over 1,300 spaces that are available in the CRA. The second thing I want to point out here is there are a couple of properties that are owned by the CRA. One is located along Vincennes Street. The other is located along Vincennes Boulevard. These are relatively small sites, but there are plans to develop those sites for public parking. And between those two sites, that would add roughly another 63 parking spaces to the South Cape area. Fourth, or thirdly, I should say, there are several areas where we do have on-street parking in the South Cape, and these are shown by different letters on this slide. And you'll notice that there is a magenta-looking color that runs north and south. One is Southeast 11th Place, the other is Southeast 9th Place, and they both sort of book in the Club Square area. There are striped parking spaces that exist there. There are some striped parking spaces existing along Vincennes Boulevard. And lastly, there are striped parking spaces in the street right-of-way along Cape Coral Parkway. Collectively, that adds about another 140 parking spaces to the South Cape District. And then lastly, well, this is not a city facility or a property owned by the city. As part of the Cove Development, that I think all of you are fairly familiar with, that is going to be a pretty large mixed-use development on the old Village Square site, that development includes a parking garage, and the city has been working with the developer there to secure about 125 parking spaces in association with that development. The city's current regulations allow several different avenues for parking relief, and that includes shared parking and satellite parking, and these are similar-sounding terms. But shared parking is just a situation where you have maybe two different business establishments located in close proximity to one another, and the hours of operation between those two establishments do not overlap. So, one business may be able to utilize parking on one site while it's closed. one site while it's closed. So for example, you might think of a retail establishment that's open from 9:00 to 5:00, located next door to a restaurant that's only open in the evening. That's shared parking. Satellite parking is a little bit different. This would be a situation where one site might be in need of additional parking, and they know of an owner who has an overabundance of parking, and may be willing to share that either at no cost, or perhaps through some type of fee-structured arrangement. Our regulations also allow for parking deviations, although there's a cap on the amount of relief that can be requested here, and the maximum cap is 5%. So for example, if your minimum parking standard, minimum parking requirement for your site is 20 spaces, you could request a minimum amount of relief of one space under that type of scenario. If your minimum parking standard was 100 spaces, you would be entitled to request up to five parking spaces. And then lastly, there is sort of a more broad, general, somewhat nebulous category in our code that allows developers to provide credible evidence to the city that the standard that we are applying to their site may not be appropriate for that particular use. So we allow for site-specific parking studies. We also allow developers to provide evidence that might be contained in some type of, of widely-accepted reference manual, like the Engineer Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual, which provides parking standards, both based on the area of an establishment, as well as the number of employees. So that could be used to justify a lesser parking standard on a case-by-case basis. That being said, that sounds like a lot of different options for developers, but there are situations where some of those options may not be viable for a particular developer, and they still may encounter situations where they can't provide all the necessary parking on their site. And so, in this case, we think pilot would be, may be a viable option for some of those owners. This would be a voluntary program that a developer could elect to enter into with the city. As the City Manager mentioned, there are references to pilot fees in our current Land Development Code, but we really don't have the structure or the underpinning in the current LDCs to allow us to fully implement the program. We also do not have a fee established as well, and that's something that we would need as well to be able to administer such a program. Programs simply allow owners to pay for each parking space that they can't provide on their site, and the program would allow flexibility for owners that are looking for, that are looking to pay for spaces for non-residential uses. It would not be an option, for example, for a developer that needed or wanted to pay for parking for a residential use, like a multifamily use. And the program would apply to a portion of the South Cape District that's shown here on this slide. It's also shown on the draft ordinance before you. This is sort of the core area, if you will, of the CRA, bound by southeast 46th Lane to the north, Miramar Street to the south, and then bracketed to the east and west by Del Prado and Coronado Parkway. In terms of when the fees would be applied, or when they could be requested by the developer, there's several different points in time when that could occur, depending, to a large extent, on whether or not you're looking at new development, or development on a green site as opposed to either the redevelopment of a site, or perhaps a change of use in an existing building. So any of these, uh, areas that you see here, pilot fees could be paid either at the point of when a certificate of zoning compliance is issued, a business tax receipt, a minor site plan if there was some redevelopment occurring on a site. If there was more substantial development, it would be at the point of site development plan approval. Could also be applied when a building permit was being issued by the Pilot fees would be a component, and a separate component from the ordinance before you, but both the ordinance that you see here, that provides the, um, language and the underpinning for these regulations, as well as a separate fee resolution would be, would need to be adopted to make this program a reality. So it would be our intent, if we received, um, guidance from council to move this forward to public hearing, that before we would bring this back to you for final adoption at some point in the future, that we would also be bringing a separate resolution that would specify what those fees are. The fees would be non-refundable, so once they're paid, there would not be a refund on the fees. They also would not be transferable from one site to another, even if those two sites were owned by the same individual or entity. So the fees would run with the, with the land, and the fees could, could continue to be used, for example, if the site was redeveloped in the future. The fees could only be used for certain types of improvements in program, programs. The fees could be used for land acquisition and improvements associated with providing, uh, parking in the future in the CRA. They could also, they could also, so they could be used for things like land acquisition. They could be used for constructing a parking garage, other parking-related infrastructure. Fees could also be used for implementing and running different type of, of parking-related programs, whether you're talking about a trolley program, perhaps a valet parking program, just as two examples. So, we're seeking consensus from the City Council today to see, if you have any questions, to see if you like what you've heard, in which case, if that is the situation, we would then bringing the, we would then bring these proposed regulations to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review or recommendation, and then back to you for adoption at a further date. And I'm available in case you have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate.
Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. I agree, in theory or in principle, that this is a good program to move forward with. In speaking with the CRA and being a business owner in the downtown, we have a lot of parking problems, and I understand that this, I like the idea of trolleys and valets and that type of thing, but there's just not that much land left in the downtown, too. So we're going to get this money from developers, but where in the world are we going to actually put parking, I guess would be my concern, in the big picture. And then if you go back to the map, and this may not be the time, but I just want to bring it up for future, not that map, the other one that showed the parking spaces. There is a lot of this one, there is a lot of work to be done on the rules and the regulations for these parking lots. We have, not including what's going on with the hurricane, but we have a huge problem that we have discussed on this council with different vehicles being stored in there, food truck storage in there, you know, owners having their vehicles there. So all those are taking up the parking spaces, and so somewhere down the line, that has to be addressed. The two properties that we bought, I think we're paying a million dollars for both of those, more or less.
Not that high.
But overall, so whatever we paid plus improving them.
Yes.
Yeah. So for all of that, it's well over a million, and then we're going to get 63 parking spaces. I mean, that is a big nut to swallow. That's a lot of money per car. And the only ones that are going to benefit currently are the business owners that are down there, not the new ones that are coming in. So I have some concerns. In theory, I think this is a good thing to move forward with, but I think we have a lot of moving parts we have to consider.
Well, Councilmember, if I may, I think you just hit the nail on the head, right? And this is why parking can be an impediment to redevelopment.
Right.
Right? Because it is costly. It does take up a lot of land. And so what we're trying to do here is, again, try to provide all the tools necessary to help redevelopment take place in certain areas. And sometimes the role of government is to come in and provide for that costly infrastructure, and parking, especially in urban cores, is viewed as infrastructure. And so it is appropriate for us to step up with a variety of programs like this one to help address those parking issues, because otherwise, the area will continue to, to not experience significant redevelopment. Now, you mentioned the lack of land that's available, but one of the benefits that we have is that we do own, I think in total, it's, when you factor in even with what's going on at the Cove, we have about 1,700 parking spaces currently. And there are numerous parcels that are under public ownership, either with the city or the CRA. We have the ability to go vertical, right? And so whether you're talking about Aguanamias, or Big Johns, or Club Square, we can go vertical and significantly expand the amount of parking that's available in the CRA. I think ultimately, we will get there. And so this program will allow us to eventually be able to fund that necessary infrastructure in the future. I think that what we're doing right now with the CRA and buying these satellite, and establishing these satellite surface parking lots, we've also gone in and we reconfigured some of our on-street parking to actually squeeze out additional parking. And then, of course, as we work with developers, like we did at the Cove, like we're doing at Bimini, is when there's an opportunity to partner up with a private developer to include additional public parking in their parking garages, those are all wins, and it continues to delay the need for us to construct a, a parking structure of some sort. So I think we have a couple of years, I think, before we get there, but if we, if our redevelopment program really takes off in the CRA, and I believe it will, especially once the Cove is completed, we will be at a point, probably within the next five, five to 10 years, where we're going to have, to have a serious conversation about building an actual parking structure. That's, that's in our future.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping will happen with the old museum site, is that
That's the perfect site.
That's the perfect site for parking, because Madison Square, I know that they're considering that a lot of those people aren't going to have vehicles, but from what I've seen so far, a lot of them do. And I don't know where they're all going to park, but, because there is no on-street parking there, except for on the backside. So I just have some concerns. I think it's the proper program to move forward with, but I do have some additional concerns. Thank you.
And on a related issue, I think we will also eventually get to the point where we are going to have to have a formal parking management program, right? And Councilmember has brought to my attention some, some issues with overnight parking, or actually long-term parking, utilizing the city's on-street parking spaces. And eventually, we're going to have a very, we're going to need to have a robust parking enforcement program to make sure that that's not happening. And so right now, we don't have that. I'm not sure we need that. It's something that I think is also going to be in our future, but that's just something for, for all of you to think about as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this is actually a little in my wheelhouse. So in my law practice, and I deal with land use, parking requirements are the bane of my existence. So this isn't a Cape Coral problem. This is, this is everywhere. I think it's an ITE problem, frankly. But, so this, so I want to credit staff, because this is something that I don't see often, and I, I practice everywhere from Gainesville all the way to Key West, and, and parking, again, is an issue, and you don't see solutions that come up like this. Now, I do want to make sure, though, before we result to, of course, we want to provide that option, that relief, as far as being able to pay in lieu of the parking, but I want to be sure that we hit all the stops first to provide those additional available methods of reduction. So you had mentioned like shared, shared use, for example. Is that in another ordinance? Because I didn't see that in the one here. I mean, I've seen the word used a couple of times, but I didn't see the description as far as, I know you described it to us, but from a planner's perspective, and someone that represents, you know, the applicants, I don't see where that would be outlined here.
It's, it's in Article 6. I don't think you have Article 6, perhaps.
Okay, I figured. I just want to make sure.
In its entirety. And most developers, most large developers, if they're not familiar with it, they are working with design professionals that are pretty savvy and would be familiar with it, or at least would know where to look in our code for parking relief.
Okay. And then, do we have like a, a mixed-use overlay down in that district? I don't, I don't do much in Cape Coral by way of land use for...
Not a mixed overlay, per se. I mean, the South Cape zoning district, along with the Bimini zoning district, are both mixed-use zoning districts.
I understand that, but do those districts provide for reduced parking requirements?
Both, both do allow for reduced parking requirements compared to other zoning districts in the city. Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then we have, like, bicycle credits and things like that. Do we do, I know the county implements those, as far as like bike rack credits for reductions in spaces. Do we have that available here?
So, we, we don't allow reductions for bicycles. We used to, but the reason we don't do that anymore now is because for sites of a certain area and above, we require bicycle racks now, which I think is a good thing.
Sure.
So, it went from being something that was voluntary. In fact, you could receive some limited parking relief in the past, under the old Land Use and Development Regulations. And now it's actually a requirement that you provide it for developments of a particular area or above.
So it's a requirement, but we don't necessarily provide a reduction in parking.
That is correct.
Okay. So the county does offer that, and I believe it's X amount of spaces for a rack. And again, once we start having more discussions about this, and, and we start learning the numbers that we're going to be asking these individuals to pay for these spaces, I think you'll have some context for why. I want to make sure that we, we make sure that we exhaust all options available to provide these developers, or even just restaurant owners or things like that that want to come in. I, I can't count on both hands how many establishments I myself have seen not come to the Cape because they weren't able to meet the parking requirements. So I think this is great to be able to offer that, but I also want to make sure that we've got everything involved. Like, City of Naples has a public access credit as well. Are you familiar with how that works typically?
I am not familiar with that, no.
In short, if you provide public access to the lot, rather than, you know, you see these some lots that say, hey, parking only for this, or parking only for that, if there's an, it's in the City of Naples. If you provide public access to that, and that be by way of sign or something else, there's, for example, a 15% reduction. Now, of course, you're not able to provide that opportunity unless all of the units in that, let's just say Plaza, have, they meet all their parking requirements, obviously. But if there's a surplus or an excess for that particular lot, then you'd be able to offer a credit. Just some ideas. But yeah, I love, I love the idea. I want to credit staff for bringing this to fruition here. I think it's excellent, but I also want to make sure that we, we get everything else in there, and this is sort of a last resort. One other thing, Councilmember Tate brought up a great point, as far as the land, the available land and the parking. As she said, we don't have a lot of land now, and I don't know whether you touched on that, City Manager, as far as, do we identify those lands now and purchase those lands now? Is that a possibility? In, in hopes that in the future, this project could fund those? Because if we waited for this project to fund those, I don't think that the available land...
So, Councilmember, what we've been doing so far with the CRA is, we are constantly in tune with the market, and whenever we become aware of a parcel that is, has come up for sale, and provided it meets certain requirements, we will pursue purchasing those properties. We've been successful with two. We actually had a third, and at the last minute, we got outbid for that particular one. So we are constantly doing that. Now, I think the long-term solution is going to be to eventually construct parking structures, right? So what we're doing with, with the CRA is, yes, we are, it's, in fact, serving two purposes. It's, number one, providing surface parking, but ultimately, it's part of a, a land assembly strategy where we'll be able to buy these smaller lots, and in time, if we have enough of them, we'll be able to aggregate them, and then put those parcels up for redevelopment, and hopefully have vertical construction, right? But we have a couple of years until we get there. I'm not worried about having insufficient space for public parking, because we already own some crucial, um, properties in the, in the CRA that allows us to go vertical, and that's how we will meet future parking demand.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Struvi. This is a great opportunity and presentation for our city... This is a great opportunity and presentation for our city. You know, I agree, I hear it all the time from the business owners down there about, you know, what are we going to do? What's our plan for parking? All of that. So I think this is a great way to give them a sustainable solution, if you will. I have two things, you know, that I think my colleagues, my teammates up here have already asked, and that is, you know, what will this look like? I think it's great in theory, but I think we need to flush it out a little bit more. I would also like to know, you know, when you can, let us know sort of the potential revenue that this program could bring in to the city for the infrastructure improvements that we desperately need in the CRA and elsewhere. And then also, are you planning to involve some of the stakeholders down in the CRA? So for example, you know, some of the entertainment or culinary businesses that are down there to get input. And I'm only asking that because I can anticipate, you know, as we develop this more, you know, we may hear from them, whether they are opposed or, you know, or for it, and probably more against it because they'll look at it more as like a, you know, having to pay for something, even though, you know, in one breath, they'll say that, and in another breath, they'll say, we don't have enough parking. So I'm just trying to anticipate maybe some pushback from some of those stakeholders. So I would just say, if there's a way, we can encourage that through the CRA, you know, through our board at the CRA, you know, and have meetings about it and invite these stakeholders. I think it will just make our ordinance and what we're trying to do more strong. Thank you, Mayor.
If I may respond to Councilmember Nelson on that particular point. So, I agree, but as you know, we don't like to get out in front of city council, and so we want to get your feedback first. If you direct us to move forward and continue to refine this recommendation, the next step is, we have it on the agenda with the Cape Competes Board, we have it on the agenda with the CRA, and then we can go out and we can have discussions with the stakeholders within the CRA. And to be honest with you, I don't know why a business would be opposed to this because essentially what it's doing is it's allowing businesses to maximize the development potential of their property and basically outsource their parking to somebody else, right? And that somebody else will be the city or the CRA, or a combination of both. And we would be responsible to provide the parking spaces and make sure that they're properly maintained and so forth, and available for their use. So I think it's a good thing for businesses.
I agree.
And we're not taking anything away.
No, no, I hundred percent agree. I just want to make sure that they're, you know, and it sounds like you're doing it, that all those stakeholders are aware and what the benefit would be to them. I just think that, you know, it's always important to get feedback because they're the ones that are going to be affected, and they're the ones that are affected now. I think it's great. I say, go for it, I'm in support of it, and, you know, carry on with the meetings and get your input, and, you know, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I just want to make sure that we, I guess, cover all our bases and hear from the right groups so that we can get their input as well.
We will definitely do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. As one of those stakeholders in the CRA, I think this is a very good idea and want to continue on what we're doing. I think an immediate, quick is looking at more of the streets that we can stripe. I know that added quite a few places over there by where the Cove is going to be developed behind the Albashawn Building and also on the other side of Club Square where we stripe that. But we can expand that area. I know just in front of my building, there's a whole entire street that's pretty wide that could add some spaces. I do agree with purchasing properties and using them, you know, the money and everything the way this program is. I think it's great. I do like what Councilmember Long said in that a lot of developers should try to exercise that shared parking or purchasing parking first because of, like he mentioned, not knowing what the cost per parking is in lieu of parking is going to be. I'm interested in seeing what we come up with and what that might cost a business if they need to use it. So, I'm forward, I'm looking forward to hearing from the Cape Competes Council and looking forward to seeing what the CRA board also is thinking about it. So, I say, go for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mike, for the presentation. I think any mechanism that provides a way for us to increase parking vertically is going to be important for us. I'm not sure that people watching may quite understand what's going on, and I'm going to try and come up with an example, and I'm going to use Good Intentions as an example. The wine place on Forty-Seventh Terrace, they have a very small parking lot, limited parking that they share with another building. Let's say they decide they want to expand and lease out that extended building. Would they be required then, under permitting, to have additional parking spaces that they would then, and under this program, they could then put into this fund to be able to utilize parking in other places?
So, the answer to that theoretically is yes. The first thing we would do would be to look at the area in the frontage of the site because that in part affects your parking standard in the South Cape along with the use in the building area. So if they were just currently meeting their minimum parking standard, and now they're expanding, and if, for a business that, let's use a restaurant or bar, for example, for every one hundred square feet of additional area, you've got to provide one more parking space in the South Cape. So let's say for argument's sake, they're going to need one more space than they have now.
Right.
And if they weren't able to take advantage of another property that might have an abundance of parking that they couldn't utilize or share parking with another site, and they weren't a parking lot site within twenty-five feet of Club Square, then this would be a viable option for them. They could pay for that, for that one space, do not have to construct it, and it would go into this pileup fund to be used for future parking needs in the, more broadly, in the South Cape. That's the idea.
And I guess, that's my question, because you mentioned that, because most people that go there, obviously, that parking lot isn't going to hold people that may want to come in there, so they just park across the street at Big John's. So this still would be an advantage for them, even though they know most of the people that are coming in there are parking across the street anyway. Okay, okay. The other factor in all this and why, you know, vertical parking could be important in the future is, we don't know what's going to happen to Cape Coral Parkway once we get the new bridge, because there's already been discussions about three-laning that, and that could eliminate parking on the street there. Not a lot of spots, but enough that it's going to have to be considered in the future. As we plan this long-term, I think that's going to have to be addressed as well. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, I also agree. I think it's a good program to move forward. When you look in the CRA area, a majority of those parcels down there are smaller parcels. And so it gives very little opportunity to a developer that wants to come in because they have to meet the parking requirement. And kind of similar to what Councilmember Hayden said, if you have an existing business down there, they may have only had enough room on their parcel to meet the minimum requirement and for whatever the square footage or their structure itself is. So any expansion, there's no possibility there. Where a program like this would give them opportunity as well, and also attract those other businesses that come in and just pay for the parking credits. So I think it's a great program in the area. If you look at the CRA, we're very limited in space. There's no doubt that we are going to have to go vertical when it comes to parking in the CRA. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. Now, with that being said, with this program, what we are doing is we're passing the burden from the developer to us then. So we have to make sure that we have a specific plan in place when we implement a program like this because there will be a time that we are going to have to look at either with a P3 or with ourselves building a parking structure. So my goal is to make this a designated budget fund in our budget where it's solely utilized for parking. So if we have developers that are building or bringing businesses here to the Cape and they participate in this, we need to set those monies aside because we have definitely transferred the burden from the developer to the city, and we want to make sure that we have funds later on. This council may never see that, but I guarantee, like the city manager said, five to ten years down the road, this is going to be a topic of discussion at some point. So it's a great program, like to see more information on it. I definitely think that it will spur growth in the downtown area, and I think that with that growth, there will be a higher parking need, so it's something that, you know, we'll definitely have to address. Maybe come up with a parking management plan or something that I think I heard someone mention, because we definitely, if we implement this, we want to have some sort of plan in place of how we're going to implement these types of parking structures.
Councilmember Tate.
I just have one more question. Let's just take my building. We have extra parking, and I know a lot of the offices downtown that are closed at night have extra parking. We're all afraid to let people use it because of the liability. And so if there is something, I know like for Fourth of July, we actually have to rope it off because we're afraid that people will get hurt on our parking space. But if we had some way of helping the businesses to be able to use those, you'd have tons of parking on Friday and Saturday night downtown, or any night of the week downtown for the businesses that aren't using their parking, so.
Well, that's actually a very good idea, and I brought it up, because what this program will allow is that we could go out and we could negotiate with property owners, and we could essentially rent back or lease parking spaces during, you know, off-hours or on the weekends
Right.
to be used by other businesses that have a need for that parking. And that could provide a way to alleviate some of the concerns of the property owner.
Yeah, I think that would really benefit a lot of the businesses downtown that are afraid to let people use it, so I would appreciate looking into that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stewie, appreciate the presentation, and it sounds like you got a consensus from council, Mr. City Manager, to move that program at least to the next step.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so we still have, I'm sorry, Mike, we still have some work to do between today and when we bring this back, so I don't want you to have an expectation that you're going to get this anywhere in the next sixty days or so. It could take as much as ninety days to possibly even six months, right? For us to refine the strategy, come up with a justifiable cost per space because we're just not, it needs to be built based on science, either actual construction cost or a formal appraisal, and so that's going to take some time for us to flush out. But it will come back to you at some point, certainly, I don't see it more than a hundred and eighty days, but not anything within the next sixty days or ninety days.
Is your anticipation to bring it back to another Cal meeting for further discussion? Or will it come straight?
It depends on what we find
Okay.
in the process. If we find that there's some issues that might be controversial, we may bring it back to council for Cal. If it's just something that is essentially just establishing the fee, and the fee is something that we don't think may generate some controversy, then we'll just put it on the agenda for an intro and public hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stewie. Okay, item 4B4 is financial management policies revisions, and this is a continued discussion from a previous committee of the whole meeting. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, we discussed this at a previous workshop. Council provided us some feedback and gave us some homework to do, and that's why we're back here today, to go over those specific areas that you asked us to reconsider. You also asked us to provide you or to reformat the presentation and provide a bit more detail. We've done that. I think what Mr. Mason is about to tell you is that he has two approaches to this conversation. He can go into very detailed, and I think he has something like an eighty-slide PowerPoint presentation, or we can be high-level, and I think there's probably something along twelve or fifteen slides. So I'll turn it over to him, and you can provide him the feedback so he can decide how to move forward.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. All right, so when we met last Wednesday, there were some questions, some offered feedback of some policy changes, as well as a request for a side-by-side comparison with an explanation of what changed. All right, so we've provided in the upload that came to you, I think, on Tuesday evening, we provided you with not only the current policy, but the proposed policy with any changes that may have occurred from last Wednesday, as well as a side-by-side comparison. It's about fifty-seven pages, that kind of goes through each of them. And I do have two presentations, but I'm having a problem opening one of them. One of them is an eighty-seven-page presentation that I can go through and go through each policy and what changed and why, or I can use essentially the same one we used last week and kind of show some of the changes that we had made after our discussion last week. So, and at the same time, we met with the Budget Review Committee, as was directed by the council, to have a special meeting with them on Monday. We met with them, spent about an hour, hour and a half or so going over the policies. The budget review voted five to one to proceed with the proposed policies that we had presented to you with one caveat that we discussed, one section that you'd already had issues with. So that's essentially what we came up with. So I'm prepared to go with either one of the presentations, and it's up to you which one you want me to do.
For me personally, the longer version has, does have more detail. I've looked at both. Now, in the longer version, there are many areas that there was no change. So if we decided to go with the longer version, I think that if there's no change noted, no really reason to have a discussion. You know, I look at through some of these slides, there may be four items on a slide, and there's only change on one. To me, there's no reason to talk about the ones that had no change. So that's for me, if we go to the long version.
Disregard the pages that don't have any changes anyway? It essentially talks about the high-level changes that were made to the document without going through each one of them individually. And essentially, it's the same presentation from last week with one minor change of suggested language that would alter what we originally proposed with the three-step process of funding the Budget Stabilization Reserve.
I think first, we'll just kind of go down the line, short or long.
Do you like to start with me?
Yes, ma'am.
The shorter version, please.
Short.
I'm good either way.
Short.
High level, short.
Short's good.
Okay. That gives you the direction there, Mr. Mason. I think we've all seen the longer version and read through it anyway.
Correct.
At some point, and I guess I'll ask this real quick, Mr. Mason, because you made a reference in the longer version on several occasions about the charter schools and kind of taking that aspect out of the financial policy, the overall financial policies of the city. At some point in time, will we be developing financial policies for the charter schools as well?
Correct, and that will go back to the charter school board for approval. They won't come back here. Again, the purpose of taking out those policies is so that we're not commingling their policies with our policies. If they're in our policies, it gives an impression that there is control on our part about how they do business, and there isn't. Our ordinance, you know, establishes them as a separate entity. We talked about, you know, the fact that they have their own separate board, they approve their purchases, they approve everything that goes on with that. The only change with our ordinance, or the only things that are in our ordinance where there's a requirement for the council to be involved is twofold. One, it's issuance of debt on their behalf, as well as the adoption of the budget. And so from a practical standpoint, you just simply, you know, my recommendation to you, and this is my professional recommendation, is that you don't commingle the funds, or commingle either the funds or commingle the policies between us and the charter schools. Until such time as, you know, maybe something changes in the future, then, you know, that all bets are off, and we make a change accordingly. But that's my recommendation to you.
Yeah, my only concern with that is, you know, as you had mentioned, council does approve their budget. They make the recommendation that comes to council, we approve their budget, and we just did an overhaul to try to help the charter schools. And like you said, we do issue debt. So in essence, we are responsible. It's a mendecible charter school. I'm not saying that we should have I'm not saying that we should have financial policies commingle. And I think it's good not to. But I do think that the city at some point needs to set financial policies that they need to adhere to, just like we are setting financial policies here for the city that will guide this board. I think we should have the same for the charter school. So that was my only reason of, of bringing that up. And that could be a future topic. But if, if we're going to try to help them financially, I think we need to develop policies that, that would, or make recommendations just like we are here with, with the city council.
Their, their set of policies will be going to them in November.
Okay.
And so the, the, again, just stripping them out of these, putting them in there, and we'll have them adopt and then we'll advise the city council, you know, whatever that, those policies are.
Thank you.
All right, so as a reminder, the financial policies, why do you adopt them? Why do we have them in good place, in, in place? You know, for financial sustainability purposes, this is also included in our, our, our strategic plan. One of our goals is, you know, is guiding fiscal stability, good financial strength and responsibility. Financial policies for any community, for any government creates fiscal discipline in how they approach either budgeting or expending their funds or receiving their funds and how to go about getting their funds back when we, you know, from a receivable standpoint, et cetera. Again, Government Finance Officers Association, along with the ICMA, which supports the Government Finance Officers Association as a best practice, provides for the institutional, basically institutionalizing good financial management practices. Again, creates fiscal discipline for any community. Also clarifies and crystallizes your intent, your strategic intent towards financial management and how we manage the city financially. Financial policies also help to define the limits and actions that staff may take when it comes to any financial transactions. It also supports good bond ratings and thereby reduces the cost of borrowing. So when you have good financial policies in place and they have strength of character associated with them, it will support good bond ratings in the future. It will support the, the, the bondholders to, to recognize and understand that this community will have good financial management practices in place to support payment to, to them in the future for allowing us to use their money to build whatever it is that we're building. It also helps to promote long-term and strategic thinking, some of the things that we have talked about, management, risks to financial conditions, helps to manage those risks. These comply and with the established public management best practices. So, you know, as a community, we've had financial policies in place of one form or another since 1991. And that has held us in good stead with regard to both our financial reporting as well as our budgeting. And, and it is a good best practice for us to have financial management policies in place. So some of the things that you saw when you looked at the comparison, you saw a realignment of policies. You also had an elimination of some policies, some things that are actually not financial policies and are usually not included in a financial policy structure. One of those is a, a definition or just simply a listing of different funds that we use. We're a government agency, governmental accounting standards boards dictates what type of funds that we use. And, you know, I don't need a financial policy to tell me to follow government accounting standards board because we have a state statute that tells us to do that. And so at the same time, as we just discussed, we've removed the references to the charter schools. Again, it's a commingling issue and I don't recommend that you include those, those policies in these, in this set of policies. We will develop a set of policies for the Charter School Board to approve. And we'll come back and we'll show you exactly what it is that they approved. So as a reminder, so these are some of the higher level and higher, bigger changes that we've made to the policies. Besides the fact that we renumbered them, we, you know, policy one through, I think it's 43. We've added some policies and, you know, some of the more significant ones associated with structurally balanced budget. Again, this, we talked about a structurally balanced budget since January. We recommend you have a policy that calls for structurally balanced budget, calls for, you know, where your current revenues are equalling your current expenditures. And then we add in anything after that. We're talking about, you know, any one-time revenue sources from a grant or one-time revenue sources from savings that we may have that we would add on top. But you want to make sure that your current revenues are equalling your current expenditures first. And that would be for current and forecasted years. Again, as part of this program, we're also looking for you to adopt this with retroactive back to 930. That primarily is associated for making sure that these policies are reflected in our financial statements that we'll be publishing in March. Okay? Policy number three, expenditures. We've added language restricting use of personal service budgets except in an emergency. I'm generally used to this as a policy anywhere. We don't use personal service budgets to fund recurring ordinary operations. The, and the primary reason associated with this is that, you know, we come before you, we tell you how many people we need in order to operate. We make every effort to fill those positions to the extent that we can. But the one thing that we want to ensure is that people are not holding back on filling their positions because they want to go buy X. And so we put a policy in place ensuring that we don't do those kind of things unless there's an emergency that would require it. Policy number eight, cost recovery. We had a cost recovery framework in previous policies and, and, and it was taken out, don't know why, but we're looking to put it back in. Again, the, the framework that we've identified, that we're going to, that we're looking to use is very similar to the framework that we had prior to 2013. And looking back and one of the, we just went through a study for our Parks and Recreation Fees. Within their framework, it's a little bit more detailed, but you'll see that for the most part, where we're at with our framework and the, and the funds and the programs that we're talking about generally fit within that framework as well. And so we're recommending that in this case, we're actually, we're adding in a, an additional moderate fee support group called Development Services for Planning Fees. And the reason for not having that as a 100% recovery is because the city does its own planning. And so you're not going to recover the cost of our planning except by our planning is citywide. When people come in here and they ask for us to do planning reviews of, of a, of a project or otherwise, they're going to pay a fee for that specific planning support. And so we would recover back that cost associated with that period of time that that person would be working on that particular plan. But for the most part, our planners are working on behalf of the city. And so we would not necessarily expect to recover 100% of the total planning cost for the city through charges to folks that are coming in and applying for various planning things. I was going to, I was sitting here thinking about Councilmember Long and the fact that this is his wheelhouse and, and the, you know, the, the idea being is that we don't want to charge his clients for our costs associated with doing citywide planning. Essentially is what we're looking at. In addition, we had a conversation about this last week. You'll see this is our proposed change to the language about how to fund the Budget Stabilization Reserve. But since January, when we recommended that we change from utilizing unassigned fund balance in a, in a number of months or percentage number of months of unassigned fund balance, we're recommending that you put this in a Budget Stabilization Reserve and you commit to that Budget Stabilization Reserve. So essentially it'd be in a, in a reserve, it would be committed. The only change associated with that or the only use associated with it would be by your blessing associated with the use of that reserve. And so we've talked about three months reserve. We've recognized that it might take us a little while to get to three months, three months or 25% of operating expenditures, including transfers. And, and to get to three months. And so we originally proposed a three-step process. I understand, you know, you're, you're, you're concerned with that three-step process. So we're all, we, we're offering this particular language as a change to that three-step process. And so in this case, the city manager would, would prepare a plan for your approval to achieve your goal of three months, whether we used any of these resources or just simply to get to that three months over a three-year period. So we'll be coming back to you with a plan, essentially is, and assuming, assuming this language is, is acceptable, then we would come back with a plan just for this purpose.
So if I can just chime in for one second. So Mr. Mason mentioned the word or the term fiscally disciplined, right? And that's what we're trying to do. And this isn't necessarily meant for today's council, but it could be a council five or 10 years down the line, assuming these policies remain in place. And that is that, you know, we are making a commitment to a strong financial reserve and that future councils should not view the reserve as a piggy bank that can be raided without significant consequence. And then if for whatever reason we ever get to the point that we have to use the Budget Stabilization Reserve, then that city council commits to a plan to replenish those reserves over a period of time. Now, we take away, we took away any references on how council will, gets there. We don't want to tie council's hands. And so our job, the city manager's job would be to prepare, again, a strategy for city, for a future city council to get there, utilizing whatever resources and tools are available at that time.
Thank you. All right, so at the same time, the policy also calls for when we can use it. Again, this creates the fiscal discipline of when to use the Budget Stabilization Reserve. We would recommend that you adopt this to allow the, the reserve to be used in case of a major catastrophic event, similar to what we just kind of went through. And that, you know, we would only utilize that, that, the, the Budget Stabilization Reserve when we have exhausted our own reserve as well as exhausted the federal and state funding that we've applied for. And so it, what this generally would mean is, and you had, and we had a brief conversation about this last night, we're going to receive 60%, I mean, 100% funding for the, our expenditures, our eligible expenditures for the first 60 days. And then we expect that the, the normal policy will kick in after that, which would be, as the city manager pointed out last night, 75% funding from the feds, 20, 12.5% funding from the state and then 12.5% funding from us. And so although we're certainly recommending that we use our current resources that we've already budgeted for in order to do much of the work for recovery, you know, for the next fiscal year or for the current fiscal year, as we develop next fiscal year's budget, if we're still in the recovery phase, we'll need to be thinking about where those resources will come from. And this would be one of those resources. Now, I'm hoping, you know, that the federal government and the state will come, come around and utilize the 90% rule, in which case the 90% rule would be that the feds would kick in a percentage, the, I think it's 85, no, sorry, 90%. The state kicks in 5%. We kick in 5%. That has happened for major catastrophic events in the past, happened for Irma, happened for Charlie, happened for a couple of others. I think Wilma also had it. And so we expect that, that, we're, we're hoping that that will be the case for any expenditures beyond the 60-day timeframe. And so that's what that means. That's how that would actually work. So it would be available to us because we've already exhausted the, the 8 million that we have available from a, from a reserve standpoint. We've exhausted whatever resources are coming in from the federal and state funding. And so we have one more resource to utilize and that would be the Budget Stabilization Reserve. We would also look at utilizing it for funding any recurring operating expenses for a limited period of time if we see a significant economic downturn threatening the city's ability to provide those services to the community. So I'm, I can, I can tell you that I wish I had something like this. And I think I told you this in January, when we went through the economic downturn in 2008 and 2009. I think it would have softened the blow for us a little bit, would have helped temper the, some of the things that we ended up having to do here. But we didn't have a large reserve then. And so, you know, it, at this point, you know, hindsight being 2020, we're kind of looking for this for the future. And, you know, so we would recommend that you, that this is one of the reasons why you would use it. And last but not least, we would recommend that you not use more than 33% in any one year. And the primary reason for that is, is that we're looking at, you know, it's three months, 33%. You'd be looking for no, utilizing no more than one month in any one year and trying to keep that two-month minimum amount or 16.67% amount on an annual basis. And so, and that's what the last bullet point kind of talks about and that's what those two kind of, you know, blend together with. We're also looking in creating some reserves for some other funds, other major operating funds that we don't currently have in place. We're looking at adding a 25% operating reserve for renewal and replacement for the stormwater fund as well as the yacht basin fund. We expect that we're going to be utilizing for many of the UEP areas in the north part of the city, utilizing stormwater for funding debt for some of the larger areas up there because there's a lot of stormwater that is, and that's going to need to be repaired in the, in the northern part of the city. And so we would look to be, put in place an R&amp;R reserve in order to ensure that there are resources available that when we need them, they're available to us. Establish reserves for workers' compensation, general liability and property liability for the risk fund. Currently, we don't really have the policy other than, you know, to say that, you know, we're self-funded and up to these amounts. So we want to make sure that with the reserve and, you know, covers at a minimum the liability that we are projecting, that would also be actuarially accrue, determined by an actuary to, of what those liabilities will be in the future. And last but not least, we would establish a restricted reserve at the same percentage of months of operating for the, in this case is for the fire fund. I think I left out the fire fund. My thing, I must have deleted that. So this would be the fire fund. Essentially, we're looking at creating the same restricted reserve type of three-months reserve because it matches up with what the funding would come from, from the general fund. So for the, for the fire fund, we would look to be matching it up basically similar to the general fund. So last but not least, again, we're, this, as I believe this is on the November 2nd, 22nd, 2022 agenda as a resolution, we're looking at it for an effective date of September 30th with the understanding that the effective date will ensure that these policies are taken into, into effect when we're developing and preparing the annual financial report for the city. And so I, do you have any questions about what I've provided?
Thank you, Mr. Mason, for the revised presentation. As far as the one element that I believe Councilmember Welsh brought up, that I think a lot of us agreed with, for me, that particular element and that change of wording satisfies some of the concerns that I had. So I'm okay with the way that, that wording was presented here today. Could you, I know you want to retro, put this retroactively back to September 30th. Can you tell us the, you know, most of the things that we do here in the city, it's, it's based in whatever timeframe that that particular item comes forward that we approve it in? Could you come and tell us, other than you want it to be listed in the policies for this, for this year, what the advantages and disadvantages are to making it retroactive, if there is any?
All right, so there's a couple of things. One, if I'm making it retroactive back to 930, there's two things. One, the policies will be included in the budget book that we're going to publish, you know, probably in about three weeks, three or four weeks. At the same time, the, the most important part for me is that they're going to reflect or be reflective in the annual financial report. So in the annual financial report, within the general fund as, as well as all funds, we have the sections associated with the, with, with the fund balance. So you have the non-spendable, you have the restricted, you have the committed, you have the, the assigned, and then you have the unassigned fund balance. By putting this in there, in this particular, as of September 30th, because it's as of September 30th... September 30th, it'll be reflected in the, in the financial statements for fiscal year 2023. That means is, is that will actually show the budget stabilization reserve as a reserve in the financial statements, and the unassigned will certainly go down significantly because you'll see an unassigned, the budget stabilization reserve. But it'll give us the opportunity to explain the budget stabilization reserve, what it, what it will provide for the city, and the policies will be provided within the financial statements themselves. So these are the things that we're looking for to communicate. Number one, this will be communicated to the, to the rating agencies, and they'll see all of this when we publish the financial statements pursuant to our bond covenants, as well as it'll be in our budget. And when we're going through and starting next year's budget, we'll already have the policies in place, and we won't have to come back and re, and realign them with whatever it is that we're doing going forward. So those are primary, those, that is the primary reason for us to do it. Otherwise, you're not going to see these policies taking effect or being effective for any future financial statements until 20, at the end of 2023, which would be then, you know, quite, over a year and a half from now.
Okay. And one other last question. First off, the budget stabilization reserve of three months, I'm totally, I totally support that. I, I think that's a, a good goal for us to try to get to. I think the majority of this council agrees with that as well. My only question is, you know, historically in the past, if there's any monies left over from any particular budget year, it's typically rolled into our, our reserve funding, correct?
Right, and so annually, again, annually, we go through the, the preparation of the financial statements, and from the financial statement standpoint, we, we determine what is not spendable. In other words, what's a prepaid expense, or what's an inventory, et cetera, et cetera. So if we've had a lot of prepaid expenses, it's going to be a higher number if we have let, or inventory, or inventory accounts, it's going to be higher number, lower number. At the same time, we would evaluate any restricted funds that are currently included in the, in the financial statements, and we restrict those funds. That goes up and down annually. Then we get to the committed reserve. We identify the committed reserve, or in this particular case, if we go forth and you approve these policies on November 2nd, we would identify approximately $45, $48 million as, for two and a half months reserves as a committed reserve. And so by that, and then we would identify what we've carried over for encumbrances into the next fiscal year, as well as what you've identified as utilizing from the subsequent period, or actually from the prior period to a subsequent period, which would be fiscal year 2023, we would show the amount that you're utilizing from fund balance in order to fund next year's budget. Okay, so by taking all of that, and it's very difficult to be able to show you this because I don't have this up on the board, when you have that, then you have whatever's left over as unassigned. And that unassigned amount is the amount that you're talking about. It fluctuates annually depending on what the results of operations were, as well as what inventories, prepaes, whatever we have out there, and are any other liabilities that we may have. So for this year, you know, if you're talking about the end of this year, one of the larger liabilities that are going to be sitting on the books for at least the general fund specifically will be payroll. We just went through a hurricane, and as we do that, we don't generally put in place a receivable for the feds because we haven't gotten that approval yet, and we haven't submitted for that, for that amount. So you're going to see some adjustments and some changes this coming year that may not be as much as that we were thinking about.
Right. And the reason I ask that question, I'm, I'm trying to determine later on, I know we don't have that luxury at this point, but at some point in time, when those reserves are at three months, because I think typically now we try to roll that unassigned sometimes over into our reserve fund because we're trying to build it up.
Right.
Or council determines, kind of like our parking lot items, what you want to do with that money. So what I'm, my question is mainly, once we get to the three months, what type, as far as the unassigned, would that come back to council for, for discussion?
Every year.
Every year?
Every single year. I mean, that would be part of the city manager's proposed budget, every year. Once you've achieved that three-month goal, the three-month goal is achieved, we've identified whatever our operating expenditures are, it's likely if our operating expenditures continue to increase, so too does the reserve. And so some portion of something will likely have to go to the reserve if you expect to achieve the three months on an annual basis. But whatever's left over, we'll be talking about it as far as the proposed budget annually.
Okay. Councilmember Hayden.
Mark, I wanted to go back to discussion that we had a budget review on Monday with Roman numeral number three, and I think it's option number 22 about if there is unassigned fund balance, then taxes will be increased. I think at the time, you said we, we may change that language to be, should consider raising taxes. Okay, that was the discussion of the, now I notice that it's, it's been eliminated in favor of funding BSR, limiting options of funding BSR in favor of one, of one approach. So what changed between Monday and today that you took out that?
City manager and I had a discussion.
Okay. And you felt like it just?
We felt this was more appropriate insofar as, you know, the, ultimately, the, our responsibility is to provide you with advice, and in this particular circumstance, we feel that that would be the better approach in this circumstance.
Okay.
And so we would provide you with a plan, and the city council would approve the plan, modify the plan, adjust the plan, but, you know, we would just give our best, our best advice. At the time, when I suggested that, you know, council should consider, that was a, you know, that was a response to the discussion at the time.
Okay.
Afterwards, sat down with the city manager, we went through it, and we felt that this was a better approach.
And that's fine, I would have probably agreed with it either way, but I, I think you're right, I think it is a better approach. And just so that this group knows, budget review, the way they worded their motion was to adopt these policies as written. The one person that voted against it was concerned about applying these policies to the, to the current year's budget, but no one else on the committee agreed with that. So that was, those are really the highlights of, of what they discussed during the, during the hour and a half.
And if I might, you know, I appreciate that comment. Yes, there was some current, there was a concern of tying these policies to the current year budget, or the fiscal year 2023 budget, the preparation of the budget. The, the bottom line is, is I'm asking to adopt this as of 9/30, not as of last year, October 1. So, you know, the, in effect, these policies weren't here, they weren't available to you, they, we had not discussed them at the, in this depth and detail prior to your adoption of the fiscal year 2023 budget. And so I would say to you that these policies are not necessarily a part of the fiscal year 2023 budget process. We talked to you about specifically two of them, and at three different occasions, I advised you, I would be bringing back to you the terms and conditions of how the BSR would be funded and how it would be used. And so we have done that, but it was after the end of the fiscal year that we did that. So I, I don't think that these two are tied together in any way, shape, or form. What we've talked about is what we talked about several times during the course of the year, but it wasn't the driver of the development, or the completion, or the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 budget. I think it's important that that be said. Sorry.
Yeah, I agree. I think we have to make it perfectly clear that basically what I hear out of that statement is, the 2023 budget is where it is. These policies here, even though it's retroactive to December, I'm sorry, September 30th, basically this just sets the framework for future budgets and futures councils, you know, to, to try to make sure that we meet these policies. That's, that's how I see it.
Correct. That is what it is for. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. What I have to ask a question on is, is not one of this 10-page. It's about the disaster reserve. I know either right before I got on council, or it was like one of the first things we did, I know we increased it, I think from 4 million to 8 million. Did we use that, this, and did we exhaust that reserve with this recent disaster?
So I'm glad you asked that. Okay, so you increased it from 4 million to 6 million. I'm recommending you increase it to 8 million by closing down two other reserves that were existing, one for facilities and one for equipment. And so I'm just suggesting you collapse them all down and put them into the, the disaster reserve, simply because there had been discussion during the course of this past year that maybe we should increase that. Okay. With that said, we're at 8 million. So you, the question is, is have we exhausted it? All right, so the mechanism associated with this disaster is, is that right now, we're expecting 60, 100% of eligible expenses to be reimbursed back to us for what we have expended as a response to the emergency, as well as debris cleanup through that 60-day period, which ends on the 22nd of November. And so we're going to be utilizing existing resources associated with the city in order to pay bills, and then we're going to get money back from the feds for whatever it is that we've expended, after we provide them with tons and tons and tons and tons of paper documentation, et cetera, for them to bless it and then pay us. After that happens, then we would evaluate where we stand on the 12 and a half percent or the 5%. It's the 12 and a half percent to the 5% that will actually end up, we will end up utilizing the disaster reserve first before we go to the next level.
Okay.
So the answer to the question is, is it's complicated, but have we used it? No, we haven't. And I won't know when we've used it for months.
So you, you feel that 8 million, I mean, what I'm asking is, do we want to make that a higher number going through this disaster, or maybe that's something to review next year after, or in two years from now, once we figure out what exactly was?
I would recommend you wait. And, and the reason for that is, is it, for, well, first and foremost, this is the first time I've seen 60 days 100% reimbursed. In the normal course of business, it's 30 days from the declared disaster date. Number two, I don't know whether we're going to get to 93, 90% threshold for reimbursements from the federal government or not. So there, there's a number of just unknowns that are in front of us to make that final determination, as well as looking and evaluating what additional projects that we have upcoming that are in the various other categories besides debris as, and, and force account or category B expenditures. So it's going to take a little while.
Okay.
And I just, the answer to the question is, is no, we have not, and I don't expect to know that again until, for months.
Okay. I just was, I, I realized that it's going to take a long time for that, but wanted to, we're going to put this in our policies for years to come, I don't want to under, underfund something for that. So I, I agree with you, we'll wait and see what happens, and we can always make that change, but.
Actually, I'm glad you said that for the years-to-come thing. Part of the policy, and at the end of the policy, there is a policy that requires us to review these policies annually, number one. Number two, these policies will be part of your annual adoption of the annual budget. And so you'll see these policies annually regardless of what happens, whether we make any changes, whether we suggest anything, whether anything comes forward that says maybe we need to tweak this, you know, this is what's happened over the course of the last year, and this is what we're foreseeing for the future, that maybe we need to adjust something.
Okay. And then I, I do like the rewording on policy number 22 with giving the city manager the plan, because as you said, that's you guys getting together and providing counsel, you think the best is not trying to direct counsel from that. So I think this is great, I just wanted to make sure Hurricane Disaster was where we were, and other than that, I like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
Mark, you just made me think of something, just on the, the hurricane topic. Yes, we know that we should get 100% reimbursed by FEMA at some point if we, if we make the 60-day mark. We also know that we're still collecting money from FEMA from Irma. So in terms of paying our bills, our debris company finishes, let's say we're $50 million into that, are they want, are they going to want to be paid immediately? And if so, how do we pay them?
Oh, well, again, glad you asked the question. We would pay them, you know, based upon the fact that we're going to receive the money back. We have, we have sufficient reserves and sufficient cash in order to pay the bills.
Okay, but from which reserve?
In, in this circumstance, that it's not a reserve that I'm going to come back to you with a budget amendment for. If, I'm going to come back to you with a budget amendment that says we're spending $50 million, and there's a receivable from, and that we're going to have revenue coming back in from the federal and state government for $50 million. So that would be the budget amendment. It wouldn't be, I'm taking $50 million out of some reserve, and then, you know, at some future date that we're going to get the $50 million back. That would be the, the budget amendment as I foresee it today.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm not sure that's answering my question, though. So which pot of money is this coming from?
All of the debris funding will come out of the general fund.
Okay, and we, and we have a $50 million pot of money sitting there in the general fund that isn't committed to anything that we can pay?
No, you do not. But at the same time, we're not spending everything during the course of the year, and I'll have that money back in time.
Okay, all right. I see what you're doing. All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think the other thing maybe to mention, too, that might help clarify Councilmember Hayden's question is, I know the federal government, we can get upfront funding, so that may be something that maybe, I don't know.
We do. We, as I, as I mentioned last night, we've submitted two expedited project worksheets totaling, I believe, around $20 million, so we expect to have $10 million coming back in shortly. So that just creates a, it, it creates a cash flow support for us, and that as this continues on, you know, you, we get the money, we, we pay it back. You know, we pay, we get the money back, but all things being equal, we expect that the resources, the city overall, all funds-wise, has the resources in order to cover this cost without having to borrow any money in order to do it.
And I think you're doing a third, that you mentioned last night, you're doing a third one as well?
I'm doing a third one. As a matter of fact, I just approved it last night. It has one more approval to go through, and then it'll probably get filed, that's for another $10 million, so we're talking about another $5 billion, thereabouts.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. City Manager, it looks like you got a consensus to me. Any, you have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all again for allowing me to come back here and do this. I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the additional information we were looking for. Okay, item five, is, is there any roundtable discussions? I don't have any, anything listed. Council have any items to discuss? Okay, seeing none, time and place, a future meeting. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, November 2nd, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.